This evening, the special meeting is to interview prospective school board director candidates and to transact any other business that comes before the board. This meeting shall come to order. I'd like to note that Mr. Rogers, the board secretary, is absent. I move to appoint Marvin Lee as the secretary pro tem to fulfill Mr. Rogers' duties for this evening. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Roll call, please, Mr. Lee.
Dr. Hag.
Here.
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 Deep breath, candidates. Deep breath. All right. I would like to welcome the applicants, and I ask that the school board directors and the superintendent take a moment to introduce themselves. We'll start from the end down there. Mr. Neal, please.
David Neal, I've resided in Upper Darby, Drexel Hill area for about eight years now. I'm a public school teacher for about 10 years. So, education is my passion. It's my livelihood. So, I'm dedicated to our community. And it's about... Is that what we're looking for?
Just name.
Oh, well, I... Well, it says introduce. Well, I'm David Neal.
Get your hopes and dreams and heights and life lessons.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought we were... Okay.
I'm a Sagittarius. Okay. Don, please.
Don Fields.
Thank you, Don.
Hello. Hello, my name is Gina Curry.
Hello, my name is Gina Curry. Welcome, I'm Rachel Mitchell. I think I know all of you.
Welcome, I'm Ben Brown.
Sorry, Dr. Hag. Dan McGarry, Superintendent of Schools.
Hi, I'm Meredith Hagan, one of the new board members.
Hi, I'm Neil Desnoyers. Welcome to this evening's proceedings.
So glad to see everyone. My name is Damian Christopher War Savage.
All right. The resignation from the school board director, Dr. Monica Taylor, was effective January 6, 2020. As per policy 004 Bog 1, filling a vacancy, the board has 30 days to fill the vacancy. The advertisement of the vacancy was placed in the Delaware County Daily Times and ran for three days, January 7th, 8th, and 9th, 2020. The deadline for submission of advocates was noon on January 16, 2020. The applicant selected for the position will be fulfilling the unexpired term of Dr. Monica Taylor until the first Monday of December 2021. The Pennsylvania School Board Association's school director job description has been posted to the district's website for review by the potential applicants. School board directors' time commitments include, but are not limited to, the following: monthly board meetings generally falling on the second Tuesday of the month; monthly committee meetings generally falling on the fourth Tuesday of each month, which include the Education and Pupil Services Committee and the Finance and Operations Committee. There's also liaison assignments and their school board professional development. The applicants will be interviewed individually in the order in which the district received their application. As only one applicant may be in the room at a time during the interviews, the administration will provide seating in the hall for the other applicants to quietly await their term. Each interview will begin with an opportunity for the applicant to make an opening statement that is up to three minutes long. Please note, three minutes long. During each of the interviews, each board member will ask one question of the applicant's. After the questions, there will be a period for board members to ask clarifying or follow-up questions related solely to an applicant's previous responses. Members of the public may observe, but may not take part or interject at any point during the interviews. The board's process is not intended to include applicants questioning or debating each other, and no opportunity for such will be given. At this time, we welcome any comments from the public prior to the beginning of the interview process.
Before that, can I make a statement?
Certainly.
Just of note, the board will not be making a decision tonight in regards to who will be appointed. In the past, that has been the process, but at this meeting, we are strictly going to do interviewing. The board will make its decision at next Tuesday's meeting at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. I was gonna say that after the public comment. No, that's fine.
I just wanted to make sure the public knew.
Not at all. No problem. All right. Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Lee, please escort all the candidates to the hall except for our first candidate, Mr. Alex Brown. Mr. Brown, welcome.
Mr. Brown, thank you.
All right. Nice name. Please begin with your opening statement and adhere to the three-minute time limit, if you would.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, board, administration. Thank you for having me here today. I appreciate the consideration. For an opening statement, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, my interests, my background, my experiences. My name's Alex Brown. I've lived in Drexel Hill since 2002. I'm not originally from this area. I chose Drexel Hill, and I've stayed. I started with a twin house...
Just back up just a touch from the microphone. Just, there we go.
Started with a twin house. Then, during a walk a whole six blocks away, bought my single. And I've been here ever since, since 2002. I came to Pennsylvania for Lower Marion Township. I was a police officer. So, I started... We'll back up. Let's start with some history. Number one, I have a family. My family lives with me in Drexel Hill with me. I have a wife who's a professional musician. I have a daughter in sixth grade who attends Drexel Hill Middle School. She went to Garrettford, now she's in DHMS. Myself, my background, I started in TV commercials and movies production behind the scenes. So, I'm well-versed in marketing and communication. After that, I switched gears, because every person has their own chapter, and I went into law enforcement. So, I was a police officer for six years. Amtrak Transit Police in Washington DC, and then relocated to Pennsylvania to take a position with Lower Marion Township. And I worked for the township as a police officer, working street patrol up and down city avenue till 2004. Professionally, then, I switched into private sector, becoming a corporate security manager for Sunoco, Amazon.com, and now, since 2009, with the largest guard force company, Allied Universal, formerly Ally Barton. For them, I'm a national manager. So, I represent specific clients and their security programs in the US and Canada. I was with NBC Universal. I was with Siemens Energy. Currently, I'm with Daimler, which is the owner of Mercedes-Benz. So, my function, I am a senior manager with national and Canadian responsibilities. That includes contract management, budgets. I've managed budgets in excess of $20 million personally, putting them together, seeing them through, managing CBA agreements in partnership with our corporate attorneys. CBAs are collective bargaining agreements. I've also worked on policy and procedures for the staff, being a workforce management professional. Those combined all created a scenario where I'm able to join you here today to present this background and experience. Through communications, I know the strength of reading, writing, and speaking. And because of that, I've engaged in Toastmasters, so I can speak on a strategic and tactical level for a lot of our issues and be an active participant in the board trying to seek solutions. For example, if we're concerned about speaking culturally, gaining confidence in our students, perhaps we want to engage a Toastmasters-type organization. I stroke...
Time. All right. Thank you for that comprehensive opening statement. Mrs. Curry, I believe you have the first question.
Good evening, Mr. Brown. Good to see you again. First question, we understand that you've reviewed the job description for the Upper Darby School Board Director. Please give us a brief description of your background as it relates to a school board director. And I think you had started giving us that, so continue.
Thank you. It's like a bonus round. I was gonna say that to get perspective, one of my... You know, we all have gifts. We bring something to the table. And one of my proficiencies is learning perspective. So, when my daughter entered school in Garrettford and later in Drexel Hill Middle School, I learned about the inner workings of the school as best I could. And I even went to the extreme of signing up with STS and becoming a substitute teacher. So, now, once a month, starting in January, I've been subbing, so I can learn that perspective. And joining the board, I'm able to bring perspectives of now the substitute teacher, which, not to be dramatic, but there's a potential hiccup, crisis, issues with staffing when it comes to substitute teaching. There's a shortage. And there's a tactical way to address it and a strategic. Just to give an example, when I was a substitute for the one day at Drexel Hill Middle, by chance, there was no lesson plan, so I had to borrow games from neighboring classrooms. It would be great to have the home and schools engage and get donations for board games and things like that, so we can put together a subcart. When I looked at the processes behind how a sub signs in, how they learn the emergency procedures, all from that one day, because quick study, vast amount of information, able to formulate a game plan, it looked like the red binder program for emergency management was not strictly audited. There was a lot of templates left in the binder. So, when I think of strategic and tactical, engaging our public safety team, do we look at a strategic vision of quality audits from the team and instructors? For example, tactically, how do we do CPR training? Do we have somebody on the public staff that is an instructor, or do we outsource that? If we have it in-house as an instructor, are we able to widen the approach and train more people in our schools, because we're public facilities and have huge populations within our building? And does that all feed into the safe culture that we're trying to breed to make education and their ability to learn in a safe, productive environment? So, I think I bring a lot to the board as far as strategic and tactical solutions using my marketing, law enforcement, and even now, my substitute teaching experiences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Brown. So, two questions. Why do you want to join the school board? And how do you view your role as a board member?
Thank you. I view my participation in the board as bringing the depth of expertise for public safety. I'm a former EMT, former police officer, former corporate security criminal investigator for those corporations. I bring a lot of depth of knowledge and expertise, so I can help guide and develop a strategic vision for our public safety group. When I was looking over the comprehensive plan and some past documents on our website, I noticed for professional development, it talks about training administrators, PCAs, but I didn't see a mention of the public safety team for specific trainings. Things like the Alice Training for Active Shooter, things like MoAP, Management of Aggressive Behavior. These are industry standards in the private sector that sometimes don't transfer to the public sector, because we all bring different skill sets and knowledge to the group. My skill set and knowledge is a workforce manager with senior-level experience, specific in the public safety environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. War Savage.
Good evening, Mr. Brown. How long... I believe you already addressed this earlier, but if you wouldn't mind refreshing us, how long have you been a resident? And please explain to us your understanding of advocacy as it relates to being a school board director.
Thank you. I've lived in the township owning a home since 2002 in Drexel Hill. I lived on Berry Avenue in a twin from 2002 to '06. Unfortunately, I bought, you know, at the height of prices and moved all the way to Huey Avenue, which is literally about six blocks from my past residence. Now, I'm in a single. My daughter went to Garrettford Elementary the whole time. I was part of the Home and School Association for Garrettford, also the treasurer, volunteering at all the activities. Now that she's in sixth grade at DHMS, Drexel Hill Middle, same thing. I'm volunteering. I made sure I meet all the administrators, the staff, and I'm highly involved with that school. So, what I'm hoping to be is an advocate, one, for the parent community, two, to speak for the administrators, the educators, learning the different perspectives that we all have, and bringing that to policy with the multi-perspective.
Thank you. I have the next question. In addition to the two school board meetings a month, there are additional meetings called as needed. What is your understanding of the time commitment necessary for this position?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The time commitment is to get the job done. If it takes a little one month and a lot the next, that's what it is. I'm very fortunate. I work from home full-time, right here in the township at my house on Huey Avenue. I travel, but I create my own work schedule. So, if we have meetings come up, I don't travel that week. If we have meetings come up, I don't go out of town that week. So, I'm very flexible to accommodate the needs, because this is a priority. This is the future of our township, and the school community is that hub in the wheel, and everything we do radiates into the township. So, we have to make the time, be it a little or a lot. We have to flex with the needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Mitchell.
Mr. Brown, there's an organizational structure that's in place in our school district. Please explain your understanding of how the school district operates.
That's a great question, because I know a basic understanding of the org structure. I've seen it on the website. It's top-down, but there is some decentralization where the building principals serve their buildings from, for lack of a better term, from cradle to grave for every process. So, if you have a bus crash in the rear lot, the building principal and the public safety team there handle that, you know, in conjunction with the transportation department. But as far as a hierarchy and the org structure, you have the superintendent, Mr. McGarry, who serves as the highest cabinet-level person. And then, there's assistant superintendents leading departments, which filter down to directors, and that filters down to the field operations, which is the building-level management with administration. And for the middle school and high school, you have the rolling... I don't know the exact term, but it's the rolling administration, where the grade principal, the counselor follow that grade up the six, seven, eight, and then reset at sixth grade. And I believe it's the same in the high school. I'll know in a few years exactly. And then, underneath that building principal and the grade-level principals, you have additional staff administration, like counselors, and the support teams for reading, math intervention, and then the educators and PCAs, supported with the contract source of STS for substitution.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Fields.
Hey, Alex, how are you? Now, you touched on this, but this is a chance to expand on it, okay? What has been your personal involvement with education in our community?
Thank you, Mr. Fields. My personal experiences with education in our community, Upper Darby School District, is multifold. So, one, the minute my daughter entered from the kindergarten center to Garrettford... Garrettford is really where I took action. I joined the home and school right away. I supported as a parent and volunteer, got my clearances, was able to volunteer for all the different activities, the fairs. I was a classroom parent. Due to my flexible schedule, I was actually able to go during the workday and support the classroom teacher. From there, when we moved to the middle school, I continued on that path, still supporting the Home and School Association, and went to the extreme of joining STS, the Substitute Teacher Service, as a guest teacher with a bachelor's degree to get that additional perspective of the help we need at STS to help staff the classrooms, which is another strategic concern we have for the district, staff classrooms. One thing with STS that I learned is it's competitive. You know, as of... I took notes, but as of this morning, for using Drexel Hill Middle School, we had six openings at Drexel Hill Middle that were potentially unfilled, because it was 9:10 this morning for today. So, if you times that by seven periods, we had 42 periods to cover with existing educators. And if we do that week after week with, you know, fluctuations across the district, that will create heartache for our current staff and educators. And if we don't engage STS on a strategic level and make Upper Darby an attractive place for substitutes, that burden will continue. So, when we talk about my engagement, I am passionate about helping our educators and making this an environment as a best-in-place for employment and a best-in-place for our students. So, I'll continue investigating these different avenues, and I look forward to helping out on a strategic level, specifically with staffing and recruitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Desnoyers, I think you have the next question.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Brown. What special attributes, talents, and abilities will you bring to the district?
Thank you. Special talents, attributes, and personality? Right off the bat, I am an upbeat, energetic, public speaker that will go to, not in a bad way, but extremes to learn about a process. I will dig into it, collect vast amount of information, and be able to process and prove based on that small snippet. For instance, if we use the Substitute Teaching Service experience, from one day, I learned we don't have sub carts that we can roll into a room that doesn't have a lesson plan that has games and different activities for the students, so they don't just go straight to their phones and watch YouTube during the period. We can make it an educational environment. And that might be a one-off. I mean, it's just a one-day perspective, but I'm able to grasp that within my seven periods of instruction and learn the red binder system, which contains the emergency management plans, and see and observe that they're all templates. Another special skill or attribute that I have is that I'm ability to improv. When I see something, I can react to it. For example, during Martin Luther King's Day yesterday, we were at Drexel Hill Middle. One of my observations was all these ShopRite reusable plastic bags that we had. And I asked Dr. Alockway, the building principal, "Did you have to pay for those?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "A discount?" He went, "No, full price, a dollar a bag." So, I was thinking about this, and he said, "Oh, and we used 270 of them at the high school." So, right off the bat, I'm thinking, "Well, we have a $300 spend on reusable bags where we're marketing," because it says ShopRite right on the side, and I thought it was kind of interesting to have that spend. Later, State Representative Mike Zabel came in, and I don't know if I'm pronouncing it Zabel, but Mr. Zabel came in to help out with the service. I immediately connected him with Dr. Alockway, and Mike Zabel was able to tell us that ShopRite is a big supporter of the township, and maybe we can get the bags sponsored for zero cost or discounted cost. So, that was an immediate response, just based on an observation and a moment in time. And I have that attribute, that ability, where I can recognize things that might be low on the radar or behind the scenes, that I can sense opportunity, opportunities to build efficiency. And that's a prime example of what I did just yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hag, I believe you have the next question.
And thank you, Mr. Brown, for volunteering for this. What do you feel is the number-one challenge facing our schools today?
That is a tough one. So, the number-one challenge facing our specific schools, the Upper Darby District, or education as an industry?
Our schools?
Yes. I think we have multiple challenges. I have friends that are educators within the district. I've been personally involved through the home and school and also through substituting now. And just through these experiences, recruitment, retention, and culture. And the third leg of that is marketing. And I think marketing has twofold. We've done a great job with the change to Director Beauford? Is that how you say it?
Buford.
Buford, okay. Ms. Buford's done an amazing job with social media, and I'd like to continue down that path, but expand upon it. Some quick research I did before tonight, when we talk about experiences and things I can bring to the table, I would partner with, you know, Dr. Counsel for STS partnerships and strategic vision. I would partner with Lou Gentile on public safety and building the team into maybe being training and audit, or at least part of the team for the buildings. And then, for Ms. Buford, we have a community profile, a Wiki page, a Wikipedia page that speaks negatively, Wikipedia-specific, that speaks negatively about our deficiencies and our achievements. Wikipedia is a editable, writable encyclopedia. So, we should be literally attacking those kind of things with positive, or at least shifting the story, so we can put... We have great marching bands. We have great sports programs. We have great arts. Why isn't that at the top of our Wikipedia page? Why is it the negative on the deficiencies of our different state criteria? So, when I think about challenges, I think about the marketing, internal and external. How do we build... I mean, we're a huge... We're... Sorry. We're a huge district, and one of the things you notice when you stand in the hallway of any of our schools is the amount of energy that flows through the hall. It's absolutely amazing. And we're unlike most districts around us, where we have the diversity, and we have the energy, and we have the size to have some really unique experiences. And when I look at our community profile, when I look at Wikipedia, when I look at even YouTube, you know, if you look at YouTube and look at what has the most views, and if you filter it by views and you type in Upper Darby School, you get a percussion team that's playing our parking lot from five years ago with 42,000 views. That's what the public sees when I type in Upper Darby Schools. The second thing you'll see on YouTube when you filter by views is "Save Upper Darby's Arts" from 2012. So, we're getting even deeper. The third thing is the 2016 lip dub from the class, when they lip-sync a music video and they do a video through the school. So, that's our top three hits on YouTube, if you filter by views. It's not current, and it's not pushing out to the community some of the great and wonderful things we do, like the art gallery in the high school, when we hang everything in the hallways. That's not the first hit. The first hit are older things that don't promote the really wonderful things. So, that's kind of external marketing. Yes, Mr. Brown?
I'm waiting for you to finish.
And then, if you look at the past two weeks of public postings, it's 12 videos of basketball games and four videos about our ban on letting the public into sporting events. So, I think another thing I can bring to the table is helping push a message that shows our energy, our diversity, and our unique experiences that we can provide to the students out into the world through things like YouTube, Wikipedia, and pushing those different platforms. The other thing that you notice is when you go to Realtor.com and people are looking for houses, it gives very basic community profile information. Do we create a community profile sheet that we can give to realtors, you know, to help promote what we do here within the district? So, I think as challenges, we're talking about the marketing, internal and external, recruitment and staffing from a substitute, because there's a lot of competition for a very select pool of candidates. There's also the public policy push we have to do with the Commonwealth to maybe change how we get career changers into education. Myself, I would be in heaven to think about language arts in middle school, but because I'm a bachelor degree and I work full-time, I can't do the 12 weeks of unpaid student teaching. There's no other profession that requires unpaid work before you work. It's called an internship, but you can't do that during the day if you're a career changer. So, as a board member, there's also public policy we can advocate for, and I would pick up the torch to try to change how we start to find instructors and see if there's a fast track for getting career changers into our education. Another part of that, as far as challenges, we have a pool of law enforcement, military. What's the fast track to get them into the education field, so there's a positive interaction between kids and cops, instead of just the interactions during a police action on the street? That's what breeds negativity in a community. If we can accept these challenges and open the door to different interactions, we can literally change the community from the hub and pushing things out into the wheel of the township. Thank you.
Okay. The final question. The school board of directors works along with the superintendent as a team of 10 to execute the comprehensive plan. Do you have any comments on that structure or how it's currently being implemented?
Yeah. Can you dive a little more into that? You said a team of 10. So, is that the council...
Right. It's nine school board directors and a superintendent. We're a team, so we're a team of 10. And the main thing that we implement is the comprehensive plan, which is the roadmap for the district. So, I want you to just talk about your feelings about that current structure and how it's currently being implemented.
Thank you. I'm actually appointed to the Comprehensive Planning Committee, so I'm part of that. Unfortunately, I missed the first meeting. I was out traveling, but I was in constant communication with the different people in the administration and keep up to speed. And the comprehensive plan is where I pulled some of the information I showcased today about professional development, not mentioning the public safety team in that, and some of the concerns, you know, with state criteria and our rankings versus showcasing some, you know, an offsetting or a complement of other activities that we do to balance out that marketing or that public relations. As far as the team of 10, that's awesome. I mean, no person should operate by themselves. We all bring something to the table, and each of us have individual experiences from the chapters of our lives. And if we can bring that to this environment to help push all of our concerns and get light to them and get resolution, absolutely. Let's do it with a community approach and have the team of 10. And yes.
Well, thank you. That completes our scheduled questions, and now, we're gonna have follow-up questions. And I think, Mrs. Curry, I think you had a follow-up question, or he answered it. Okay. To my other... Well, thank you. That completes our scheduled questions, and now we're going to have follow-up questions. And I think, Mrs. Carey, I think you had a follow-up question or he answered it, okay. To my other school board colleagues, are there any follow-up questions for Mr. Brown? Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Great. Thank you, Board. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, welcome, Ms. Dawes. I think you can begin with your opening, your opening statement that should be limited to three minutes, please.
My name is Leah Dawes. I've lived in a district for nine years, from Philadelphia, and I'm a single mother of a high school senior. She's a senior here at Upper Darby High. My experience with education is that I went to private school. So similar to my daughter's journey, I transplanted to Philadelphia in the fourth grade. She transplanted to Upper Darby in the fourth grade. I went from a public school system in the suburbs of Jersey to Philadelphia private school. And she went from a Philadelphia private school into an Upper Darby or suburban public school. For most of my life, I've always had some level of involvement with children, various ages, even in my current role. I look at my job as a supervisor of managing bargaining unit or union members, kind of sometimes maternal, sometimes as an educator, but also, but ultimately as a leader. Most of my volunteer work, I guess that we'll talk about throughout this interview, has been done in addition to my full-time job. I've worked at PICO. I'm in my 15th year. And being a board member, volunteering, starting up different programs and leading various programs have been done in addition to my full-time job. So programs that my child has been involved in or not, or not, just different volunteer opportunities that have welcomed me as a, as a leader and someone interested in, I guess, the advocacy of children. Most of my experience is not always just education, or that volunteer experience isn't always around education, but just the development of young people. What I share with the young people that I mentor, I still have 20, about 20 years of work. Anybody that I mentor or develop will ultimately be my boss. So I'm really trying to secure my employment. So that's how I look at it. From our high school interns, our Drexel co-ops, they will, they are my future bosses, and that's how I mentor and develop.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll begin with our questions. First question, Mrs. Carey.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you for having me.
First question. We understand that you've reviewed the job description for Upper Darby School Board Director. Please give us a brief description of your background as it relates to being a school board director.
Okay. My background as it relates to becoming a school board director, because I've always had some type of volunteer experience, but in the Philadelphia school system, I thought it was important that I involve myself or align myself within the Upper Darby School District. Those opportunities really came fast and just fast. So some of the things that I've been involved in, I think I've worked with the last three superintendents, Dunlap, Norelli, and McGary. So these nine years, I think I've been saying that I've lived in Upper Darby for 10 years for the last six years. Like, I just feel like I've been here forever. So my experience, one of my first opportunities was an opportunity that I took with my company, with PICO. Under the credit of Liberty umbrella, we have an explorers program. I was a part of the explorers program for six years. I led it for two. How that relates to Upper Darby is that I would recruit our students. So several students throughout the Upper Darby school system completed our PICO explorers program, where PICO professionals mentored children throughout the PICO service territory. I then had an opportunity to become a part of the Upper Darby Home and School Committee. This is when I met Dr. Dunlap and Dana Spino, where we were to, to kind of get the superintendent's take on things that were impacting the district and become that advocate at our local home and school committees. With my involvement of that and just kind of being dependable and reliable, I presented the eighth grade, the eighth grade award, or an award and an eighth grade award ceremony on behalf of the Upper Darby School District Home and School Committee. Did another year with the Upper Darby Home and School Committee, where I met Andrea Lawful Sanders and Denise James. With this, we then led into the Parents as Leaders Program. So I spent two years working alongside of the current superintendent and two, two resources, Andrea and Denise, about being responsible parent leaders. The Parents as Leaders Program was about advocacy throughout the schools. So how do we, how do I become an advocate that when I talk to teachers, that I'm presenting a fair message, that I'm not just thinking of my child? And when I see people in the community or other parents or other leaders, how do I talk to them about the full scope or the broad initiative of the Upper Darby school system? That Parents as Leaders Program really taught me that my biases were standing in my way of my advocacy. So by me getting, getting rid of my biases, when I sat and advocated for my child, I was able to advocate for other people's children, as well as the teachers, as well as the superintendent. So really wasn't about me. It wasn't about what was affecting my child at the moment, but what was affecting the school and seeing it as not just an opportunity for a game, not seeing it as just as an opportunity as a game for Malia, but as a game for the school.
Thank you very much. Next question, Mr. Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. Good evening, Ms. Dawes.
Good evening.
So why do you want to join the school board? And how do you view your role as a board member? So it did cut out, so I will repeat it. So why do you want to join the school board? And how do you view your role as a board member?
My desire to be a board, to be a board member isn't new. Always had the desire, but I needed to make sure that I had the time and the opportunity to commit to it. My child is a senior in high school, so I think now is the right time for obvious reasons. My child is pressed upon me that I need to find something else to do other than worry about her. So, so the why has always been there. I think it goes in line with me being a board member with Youth Empowerment Service, being a, on a steering committee of Y achievers. I've always had a passion for youth and the things that, being, not just being a part of a nonprofit, but being a part of the whole system. And how do you?
How do you view your role as a board member?
So the role of a board member is to work alongside of the superintendent and to really kind of help hold the superintendent to task, not just as a wagging of a finger, but to be kind of like a partnership, to kind of see his vision and to make sure that you're able to see or communicate all sides of it. So if there's a gap in what he's seen, helping him see a different perspective and vice versa. So that, I mean, it's not, it's nine leaders supporting a mission, not just one person's mission, but a person with a dynamic team.
Thank you. Mr. Ward Savage.
How long have you been, I know you've probably already covered this, but if you don't mind hearing us, how long have you been a resident? And please explain briefly your understanding of advocacy as it relates to being a school board director.
Okay. So I've been a resident for nine years. And how do I understand advocacy as a school board director? So just to restate what I, you know, talked about earlier, is to really understand how the initiatives of the school, the, the, the pushback with Clifton Heights, the ironomic challenges, the, the equity plan, the, how, if there's any gaps in understanding that, understanding or advocating for what those are, to make sure that we fully understand it as a board. Advocacy, I think, is really understanding multiple sides and being able to advocate for all of those sides.
Thank you. My question. In addition to the two school board meetings a month, there are additional meetings called as needed. What is your understanding of the time commitment necessary for this position?
What's my understanding of it? Yeah, so I think it's a, I think I'm in a perfect place right now to commit to it. My workday is typically over at 3:00. I start my workday somewhere around 6:00 AM, if not earlier. It's usually over at 3:00. Depending on the time, I can probably get a power nap or not. But my 15 years with my company and them being a partner in my volunteer experience, this is right in line with my, my job's ask of may. So I have to be a face in a community, not just a face in the office. So I believe I have the partnership of my nine-to-five, as well as the flexibility to commit to meetings as they may come up.
Thank you. Mrs. Mitchell.
Ms. Dawes. There's an organizational structure that's in place in our school district. Can you please understand, explain your understanding of how the school district operates?
So the organizational structure, I believe we start with the superintendent, and then there's two assistants that are student services and personnel, and reporting through those are things like the CFO, transportation, pupil services, technology, I feel like a public safety, communication. So the question is, how do, how do the, how does the organizational structure? Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Please explain your understanding of how our school district operates.
Okay. Okay, so the superintendent working alongside of his assistant superintendents and through the leadership of different leads or directors throughout the, to help manage or run the schools, to help implement those. The board helps oversee. The various directors and the assistant superintendents help implement that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fields.
Hi, Ms. Dawes. How are you?
Living the train of things for us.
Oh, fantastic. Don't be that lucky. I know how that feels. What has been your personal involvement? You've spoken to this so much, this is your chance to expand. Okay. What has been your personal involvement with education in our community?
I think my personal involvement has been the various cabinet of the superintendent reaching back to see me as a leader, allowing my leadership to help shape different programs within the school. I'll speak about my experience with Speak Up. So it was just ironic when I walked up and I saw the Speak Up signs. So when I was leading PICO explorers, Speak Up actually came to meet with me. And so one of the leads of Speak Up, wife works at PICO. So in their quest to try to get funding, had a meeting with, had a meeting with me and some other leaders, told us about the program, seemed nice as ever. About a year later, Dana Spino, or the director of communications, reached out to me and said, I want you to go to this meeting with me so that I can, so that we can advocate getting this for Upper Darby. And I said, I'm totally familiar with the program. I would love to see how it works. So I go to the meeting and run into the same woman I ran into a year ago, was able to participate in a meeting with students of the community. If you've never participated in a Speak Up meeting, it is completely life-changing. And so we were able to advocate having that here. So, long story, but just being sought out as a leader, my commitment, and then being called upon to help advocate for other opportunities, not just, so can I get my child to attend Speak Up? Probably not. However, will her peers? And that experience helps you understand what your child is saying. Like, by this child's experience and them being transparent, I was able to be a different parent for my child. That's the motto of Speak Up, but that is one of my experiences with Upper Darby School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Des Noers, I think you have the next question, sir.
Good evening, Ms. Dawes.
Good evening.
What special attributes, talents, and abilities will you bring to the district?
So what I find special about me is that my years in corporate. I think my understanding of what is asked of young people when they come into the workforce, the different languages that we use throughout business and development, I see it being a challenge for education. So most of education is being handled like a large corporation, and it gets lost when you give it to teachers or superintendent. So I believe that's a special skill of mine. I'm able to weed through, being, for my 15 years at PICO, I've always managed bargaining unit employees. They are managed by a union contract. So if you want to discipline somebody with a bargaining in a union, then you have to reach consensus. You have to work along labor relations. You have to work along with lawyers, just to reach consensus to be able to proceed. So somebody says, we should discipline this person, and you got five other people that stay different. No, not really different than the nine plus the superintendent for the school board. Reaching consensus on something that we thought that we wanted to do, and then understanding why we can't move forward. I think that's my superpower daily. My job doesn't agree, but I, but that is what I would bring.
Thank you. Mrs. Hig, I think you have this question.
Thank you, Mrs. Dawes, for volunteering for this.
Thank you.
What do you feel is the number-one challenge facing our schools today?
Funding. Without funding, then you're asking, you're putting a tall ask on various resources. So you're, you're limiting with your options if you don't have fair funding, and none of which are favorable to your community. So you're asking your teachers to do more with less, you're taking away different curriculums, or you're asking your community to understand a tax hike. So for me, it's funding.
Thank you. I have the final question. The school board of directors works along with the superintendent as a team of 10 to execute the comprehensive plan. Do you have any comments on that structure or how it's currently being implemented?
Comments on how the current comprehensive plan is being implemented?
Comprehensive plan is the roadmap that we execute to, in order to administer education, and we, you know, we work along with the superintendent. So we just want you to talk about how you feel that structure, if it's effective, if it's a good design, just your feelings on that construct.
I've been, I've been attending school board meetings probably, probably for the last five years. Just short answer, I think it is, I think it's fair. I think we've elected the right people to work alongside of the superintendent. So I think it is fair. Some opportunities, I do see that some work that was brought to my attention very early on in my involvement is that we have a lot of elementary schools that aren't evenly, that don't have an even number of students. I think we have opportunities as far as our district is concerned as well, with size and the limitations. So... So, so in the years involved, I'm pleased with seeing that some progress is being made with the, with the plan and how it impacts like ironomic and how we're kind of trying to get Clifton Field to open up a new school. So I'm pleased.
Thank you very much. Now, we will have any follow-up or clarifying questions from the board? Okay, I don't think we have any. Thank you very much. I appreciate your volunteering and seeking this opportunity. Okay. How you doing, Mr. Mann? Good to see you again. Okay. We're going to begin with your three-minute opening statement. Please begin.
My name is Bruce Mann. I live in the Drexel Hill section over by St. Andrews. And my wife and I and family have been there for 31 years. Prior to that, my wife and I lived shortly in Havertown. And I grew up in Havertown myself. We've had the privilege to send all of our children here to the Upper Darby School District. I have four children. We graduated one in 2005. We went off to the University of Notre Dame. We graduated one in 2007. We went off to Clemson University. We graduated one in 2011. Went off to Rochester Institute of Technology. And we graduated our last one. And he went off to the University of Notre Dame as well. They got their education here. We didn't send them to tutors. We didn't have SAT trainings. They learned from Hillcrest to Drexel Hill to Upper Darby, respective universities, and they're all out in the world, which means they're not home. It is a mixed feeling. But the education that they got here wasn't just what they learned in their books and their classrooms. Coming to a school district where there's such diversity helped them move on at universities where some kids had never met people from other countries, had never met people of different skin colors. They had all that here. I had those people at my house that helped me grow as an individual. Because I grew up in Havertown. I was born in '54. You know, it was pretty much a white neighborhood. So I learned and I grow. I work overnights. I'm in the printing industry. By working overnights, it's allowed me to spend time to volunteer. I work part-time for the school district, coaching athletics at Drexel Hill Middle School. It's great to work with students. It's great to meet and talk with parents. You can learn so much just by listening. As a manager in a printing company, I found that that's one of the best things you can do is to listen to people. Don't react. Listen to what they have to say. Think about it and always get back to them. I would like to do that as a school board member. I want to listen. I want to learn. I will be retiring in April. I am looking forward to doing something to give back to the community that has served us so well. And I'll close with saying, I'm going to paraphrase because I don't like to write things down and have them in front of me. I wouldn't be able to talk to everybody. But it goes something like, when you're born, you dance before you walk, you sing before you talk, and you draw before you read. And all that is still going on here in the Upper Darby School District. They've allowed the arts to be taught all the way through school. I have sat through many performances at Hillcrest and Drexel Hill and here at the PAC Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Curry, I believe you have the first question.
Thank you. How are you tonight?
I'm doing fine.
Can you just repeat that quote? You said, you dance before you walk.
You sing before you talk and you draw before you write. And that may not be exactly.
Okay, great. I think it was draw before you read. Yeah. Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Appreciate it. I like that. We understand that you've reviewed the job description for the Upper Darby School Board Director. Please give us a brief description of your background as it relates to being a school board director. I know you just gave us your background, but as it relates to being a school board director. Thank you.
I guess to be a director, you, what I feel my qualifications are for is that I've kind of worked in the school district. I have worked with students and parents and administration. And I feel that would help me to move on and help make decisions to keep what I feel is a great system intact.
Thank you. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mann, for coming in. Now, so why do you want to join the school board? And how do you view your role as a school board member?
Well, as I stated earlier, I feel it's an opportunity for me to give back to the school system that my, my children thrived in and to continue what I feel is a quality education system.
Thank you. Mr. War Savage, I think you have the next question.
Good evening, Mr. Mann. Thank you for joining us this evening. I know that you've already gone through this, so if you don't mind refreshing our short-term memory, how long have you been a resident? And please explain your understanding of advocacy as it relates to being a school board director.
Okay. I've been a resident here in Drexel Hill for 31 years. And I understand that is a responsibility for me to come to meetings, be available for presentations and, and other activities. I think my work schedule allows me to be available, whether it's evenings like now or during the daytime if I had to be somewhere at that point.
Okay, Mr. Mann, I have the next question. In addition to the two school board meetings a month, there are additional meetings called as needed. What is your understanding of the time commitment necessary for this position?
Well, once again, my work schedule allows me for anything. And since I'm at the end of my working career, which I'm kind of looking forward to. After April, I'll be available 24/7.
24/7? Can I quote you on that?
Listen, when you, when you work third shift as long as I have, you don't eat the same, you don't sleep the same, and you, you learn to adapt. So yeah, you could reach, reach out to me anytime.
All right, okay. Mrs. Mitchell.
We used to get those 4:00 AM snow calls, but we don't get those anymore. So you can sleep in. There is an organizational structure in our school district. Please explain your understanding of how our school district operates.
Okay, you have the, the administration, which is headed by Dr. McGarry, and the school board, which oversees what they, they approve appointments and hirings. And, you know, they have to come to a public meetings and, and vote on, on things in that nature. It has to do with the school budget. It has to do with setting up all school functions, whether it's using the PAC Center, whether it's athletics, whether it's busing. The board has to put, I guess, their stamp on everything like that.
Mr. Fields.
Hey, Mr. Mann, how are you? So this is again about your personal involvement. Just speak on what has been your personal involvement with education in our community? You touched on it, but it's a chance to expand on it.
All right. I guess I've been a volunteer within all the schools that my children attended. And my wife was fortunate enough to be involved on some committees, whether it was the PIP committee here at the high school. She used to run the RIF program at the, at Hillcrest Elementary. And that made me a sounding board at home and also a volunteer to help with writing grants for the RIF program, setting things up, being available. And I, I plan to be able to continue to do that.
Mrs. Desnoyers.
So what special attributes, talents and abilities will you bring to the district?
I think using my, my professional life as a supervisor and a manager, I can help plan and utilize time. I think that, you know, no time is wasted time. So how can we utilize the time that we have and get done quality performance?
Mrs. Hake.
Hi, Mr. Mann. Thank you for volunteering for this. What do you feel is the number one challenge facing our schools today?
Volunteerism. You know, I still get emails to help come out and help with the prom and help with other activities. I have been on bus trips where none of my students were actually going to the Franklin Institute or things like that. Somehow we have to get out. We have to, to listen and talk to the parents at the elementary level when their kids are entering school. How can they, how can they help be part of the system? Because when they're part of the system, as I was fortunate enough to do, I think it helps the children appreciate and the parents appreciate what they have here.
Thank you. Mr. Mann, I have good news. I have the last question. The school board of directors works along with the superintendent as a team of 10 to execute the comprehensive plan. Do you have any comments on that structure or how it's currently being implemented?
Well, I, I think 10 is a great number. You know, you have enough people where you're going to get a variety of opinions and interests. And yet it's not having 17 people on stage trying to prove their one and only point. So you do the public meetings, but prior to those, you meet individually and you try to work out what you're going to present to the public. And I think that's, you know, public is the way to go because you want to keep everything transparent. But it's, it's an excellent opportunity to show a unified front when you present things.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Now the board will ask any clarifying or follow-up questions that they might have. Mrs. Curry.
One of the things that you said for number eight, what do you feel is the number one challenge facing our schools today, is a hot button of mine. And really, I call it engagement. You called it volunteerism. I call it parent engagement. If you were to be on the board, how would you, what would you bring to it to increase the parent engagement that we often struggle with today because of our society and how it works and the time that parents can give? Because that's something that I think about quite often. Thank you.
I'd like to go out and visit the schools and try to talk to as many parents as I can. And I think at, at that point, maybe first, second, third grade, the children, you're not going to get a lot of information from. But I think you can, moving on into the latter, elementary school, middle school, where you're trying to prepare these young men and women, their opinions are very important. And what they say, what they would like to say, that doesn't mean you get what you ask for. But by gathering that information, by listening, and, and you'd be surprised what you can find out by, just by listening.
Are there any other follow-up questions from the board? Thank you very much, Mr. Mann. I appreciate you coming out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
All righty. Should I just go?
Slow down. Allow me if you could. I know you're raring to go. So you will have the opportunity for opening statement of three minutes. So if you are ready to begin, please do.
Sure. I'll keep it short and sweet. Just about everyone in here knows me. My name is Girlene Singh. I am a 2018 graduate of Upper Darby High School, currently a student at Drexel University here in Philadelphia. A few things I want to touch on about myself. As most of you are aware, I served as a student school board representative during my senior year of high school. So I got the pleasure of sitting in that seat right over there. And I got to meet with students of all different backgrounds in our district. Our students are very diverse and the issues that they face are very diverse as well. So I got to see and tackle a lot of those, especially here at the high school during my tenure. I'm a product of Upper Darby schools. I went to Walter M. Senko, where I was bused 30 minutes away from where I lived every single day for a few years. Excuse me. And then I went to Charles Kelly Elementary School, where I also went for a couple of years, Beverly Hills Middle School, and then finally, Upper Darby High School. I've seen a lot of the issues that currently our students face today not too long ago. Again, with the busing. I, I was there. I was in it. I've seen everything that our students see today. And that's the one thing I bring to the table is that I've, it's only two years removed from being a student in this building. I've seen what our students face and I, I can bring that insight to the board. A lot of decisions that are made here are made with the insights of taxpayers, of parents. And I think the board can really benefit from knowing the student side of things. You know, how students respond to certain decisions, what sort of resources our students need. Because I was in that seat and I know what it takes for a child to succeed. Benefit number two that I bring to the board is that I come from a community that has been traditionally underserved. Not a lot of school board members or even, you know, township council members or other politicians have come from the area in which I live. I'm from the sixth district of Upper Darby, so right next to Milborn. I also lived in Milborn for several years. And our area of the township has generally not been listened to. In large part because a lot of the people in that area of Upper Darby are immigrants. Having grown up as the child of immigrants, I know firsthand that politics is not something that we care about. Right? People either don't know how to get involved or they're too scared to do so. And I think I could be a great voice for those people who feel like they haven't been heard at this level of politics or even beyond. So those are the two things I would bring to this board.
Thank you for the opening statement. Mrs. Curry, I believe you have the first question.
Hi, Mr. Singh.
Hi there.
The first question is, we understand that you've reviewed the job description for Upper Darby School Board Director. Please give us a brief description of your background as it relates to being a school board director. And you kind of just did that, but just give us a little bit more of a description.
Sure. So I have seen, as all of you know, all these school board meetings for the past, I want to say, year and a half, two years, either at that table or at that camera over there. And so I've tackled on all the paperwork that you guys deal with on a day-to-day basis. I remember when I was school board representative, I would get that folder full of reports. I would go through them, read all the policies, see what was happening and watch as all of it unfolded. So I'm very familiar with the policy work side of things as it relates to being a school board member.
Mr. Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. Girlene, why do you, why do you want to join the school board? And how do you view your role as a board member?
Part of the reason I decided to embark on this adventure was because I see Upper Darby as a community that I would want to live in for the rest of my life. Some people that I graduated with don't really see it that way. And I want to help build up this community Uh, and I want to help build up this community so that it can become a, a community that a lot of young professionals are, in my position, will want to move into and stay in, and that they want to educate their children in. And I think, uh, I can bring that perspective of, uh, you know, being, uh, a young member of this community, uh, to the board to help, uh, build a, a brighter vision for what the school district can be.
Thank you. Mr. War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown, and thank you for joining us this evening, Girlene. How long combined have you been a resident of Upper Darby Township, or Upper Darby School District, rather? And please explain your understanding of advocacy as it relates to being a school board director.
Sure. Uh, I've been a, a resident of this township ever since I was born, um, back in two thousand, um, except for a brief stint in Canada during third grade. That's a much longer story. Uh, but the rest of that time I've been a resident either of Milborn or, uh, of the Upper Darby Township. And advocacy I see as a very important role, uh, for a school board director, uh, because a lot of the decisions that you guys make here are heavily influenced by other levels of government. Uh, we talk a lot about fair funding and why, and what happens at the state level affects the lives of children every single day. Uh, so I think it's incumbent upon, uh, school board directors, administrators and even, uh, parents, uh, to join together in making sure that we advocate at every level of government to ensure that public education is fairly funded, uh, and that it is given every single resource it needs to succeed.
Thank you. I have the next question. In addition to the two school board meetings a month, there are additional meetings called as needed. What is your understanding of the time commitment necessary for this position?
I know that, uh, from, in hearing from all of you, that it takes many, many hours every single week, uh, between, uh, reading policy reports, uh, coming to community events, uh, doing, uh, other liaison work. Uh, so I've seen a lot of the stuff that you guys do and I'm very prepared to tackle it. Uh, I'm already here at all these school board meetings, uh, so I know that time commitment well.
Thank you. Mrs. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's an organizational structure in place in our school district. Please explain your understanding of how our school district operates.
Sure. Uh, the school board, uh, directs policy, uh, that the administration enacts, um, and that trickles down to, uh, administration at the school level, uh, and then by grade level.
Mr. Fields.
Hey, Girlene, how are you?
Good. How about you?
Good. What has been your, this might be kind of obvious, but what has been your personal involvement with education in our community?
I've been a student, um, in this district, uh, for eighteen years. Well, not eighteen years, whatever. Eighteen minus four, fourteen. I learned math here. Uh, I've been a student for a long, long time, so I've been, um, on the other side of it. Um, several of you are in the education field. Um, several of you have children, uh, so you're parents involved in the district. But I don't think, um, ever in this board's history have you had someone who has been so close, uh, closely removed to the edu, actual educational experience. And that's why I think, uh, having that sort of voice is really important.
Thank you. Mr. Desnoyers, I believe you have the next question, sir.
Yes, uh, Mr. Singh, thank you for your time this evening. Uh, what special attributes, talents and abilities will you bring to the district?
Uh, like I've said before, you know, uh, being in part of this community for my entire life, um, I understand, uh, a lot of the nuances of, uh, of the school district, uh, of the way, uh, of how diverse our community is, uh, of how students react to some of the decisions that are made on this board. So I think insight, uh, is, is the key thing, uh, the key skill that I bring to the school board. I still talk to a lot of people, a lot of, uh, kids, uh, that go, uh, either to the high school, uh, or, you know, friends of my little sister who go to Beverly Hills. Uh, and they tell me about, all the time about, uh, you know, we've got this happening in our school and that happening in our school. So I'm, I'm still very involved, um, in all the happenings of the school district.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Haig, I believe you have the next one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and thank you, Mr. Singh, for, um, volunteering to be here. Um, what do you feel is the number one challenge facing, facing our schools today?
The number one challenge, uh, of our schools is trying to find the right resources, uh, for our children. Far too often, it feels like people at the top, uh, don't really see public school education, um, as an important line item on the budget. Um, and I think, and going back to the advocacy we were talking about earlier, uh, it's really important that we work together, um, here in the community, uh, to make sure that our students have every resource they need to succeed.
Okay, I have the last question. That's good news, right?
Sure.
Okay. The school board of directors works along with the superintendent as a team of ten to execute the comprehensive plan. Do you have any comments on that structure or how it's currently being implemented?
I think it's great that, and the board and the superintendent are meeting all the time. I think, you know, considering that you guys are making the policy here, uh, seeing how it's enacted and seeing that, and following it through to the end is really important. Uh, it shouldn't just be handed off. Uh, you should be working together constantly, uh, to ensure that policy is interpreted properly and that the vision that you see for-
Thank you very much for that answer. Uh, now the board will have, um, the opportunity for any clarifying questions or, um, comments. Any, any clarifying questions from the board? Okay? Thank you very much, Mrs. Singh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee's going to go get the other candidates. I don't think we have any more candidates tonight. At this time, I want to thank all of the candidates for their interest in becoming a school board director and taking the time to participate in this interview process. You all did a great job. You all should be proud of yourself. Uh, it's not easy going through what you went through. I've actually went through it. So it's, it's tough. It's, you think you're prepared, you think you know everything you want to say, but staring at, you know, uh, nine or ten or eleven sets of eyes, um, can be grueling. So I'd like to commend you all for how well you did. Uh, the board will be selecting a candidate to fill the vacant school board director position at a special voting meeting on January twenty-eighth, uh, which is next Tuesday, uh, at six PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Have a good night.